All right, this is regular meeting of the Napa State Council's called to order on Monday, the twenty eighth of August, twenty twenty-three in Council chambers. Let the record show all council members are present. Welcome, thank you for being here this evening. We ask that you put your cellphones in the silent mode. And visitors, if you would, please sign in. And if you wish to speak under visitors remarks, please fill out the form found in back. State your name and address at the podium, as we must document all meeting business, and remarks limited to three minutes. Tonight's invocation will be led by Councilmember Harris, then followed by the pledges.
The scene of our graciousness in heaven, my father, father, we come just like an empty picture waiting to be filled. Father, we thank you for life, we thank you for health, and father, we thank you for being able to live in a great city that's called Navasota. We thank you for living in a great city that's called Grimes County. Father, we ask that you go with everyone and give us, just give us a blessing and let us love on each other and let the community be just one big, great, happy community. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Item three is remarks of visitors. I think we have two, but I think they'll be under the, under item six. You can prefer if you wanted to speak at this point, or do you want to, can wait until...
Can I speak at both? First one is up to two minutes.
Okay, sure. Deborah Richardson?
Hi, I'm Jemper Richardson, twelve oh two Lane Street in Navasota. I just wanted to say, on this previous workshop that y'all just had, I think that sick pool is a really good idea. Where I used to work, the University of Houston, we did that, and it allowed us to really help our own employees, you know, who really having a tough time, so that's a great idea. I do have a question on the certifications. If you pay some, we're gonna pay for certifications, and like you said, some certifications will require, you know, you have to keep up, you have to, the employee has to do certain things once a year. So when you write that, kind of build into it, what are you gonna do with an employee who lets it lapse? And will you pay for it a second time if they come back? So I would just ask you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item four is staff, including staff report, Mr. Weeks.
Mayor, Mr. Members of council, I'm gonna ask our new representative for Republic Services come up and introduce herself to you.
Good afternoon, everyone, mayor, council, staff, and residents as well. My name is Laura K. Part. I am with Republic Services, have recently transferred to the area out of our North Texas market. I have been with Republic Services for twenty-three years. Nineteen of those years were in sales, ten of that doing municipal. I spent three years as an operations manager, actually bossing the guys around, so I've got a little new, new perspective coming back to municipal. I am your person, let you know that I'm here for you. I've left my card to be passed out to everyone, and I just look forward to getting to know everyone and, and just getting invested in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for showing up. Next item is update on CIP projects. I think John McKay's gonna go and give that to us today.
Good evening, mayor and council. I gotta ask, go ahead and give the CIP update, go a little bit further in depth. I think there are some questions on the CIP, large project specifically, but just over the other ones quickly. The road maintenance project, that Chip Seal project, we're in project closeout phase of that, they've got the road in. There's some punch list items, they still have to come back out and re-sweep. There's actually, while we've been sitting here, emails going on about that. Fire hydrant project, the big chunk of fire hydrants, they are putting in the last couple of valves, actually today, tomorrow, and possibly maybe even Wednesday. Then they'll be able to replace those fire hydrants, and then they'll be in the system. They won't be, the last step will be a flow test to determine what color the tops go for the fire hydrants, but they'll be there. The airport utility extension project, they've got both the water main and the sewer main in. They're ready to put in the second corporate drive. They should be getting some rebar on site this week, start forming up for that, and they start to do their testing on their utilities. Couple other small things, the clarifier, I know that's been asked about before, turns out we ran into an issue with obsolescent parts, so they had to custom fab a part, they're still fabricating that little part, hoping to start it up the week after Labor Day, is where that currently is. The CIP project itself, so we are continuing down Sycamore right now with water. Sewer, they're starting, they're up close to Hillside, they should have finished up their last service today, putting it in. But in general, I want to say kind of how that goes, we've got about two miles of water line, and, or two miles of sewer line and three miles of water line in this project, overall. Of that, we've got about a half a mile of each put in. So it's, it's rolling, it's, it's a pretty long process in each of those though. So it's the sewer line, you get one crew, sewer's a simple one. They start on the downhill side and they start working their way up, and they install their mains, and as they're installing their mains, they'll start going off on the side and doing cleanouts for all the residents. Every house gets one. Water, they actually put in the main. This is where you've seen Judson is, the main's actually there underground, but once you get that main underground, you have to connect it back into your system, you have to test it, and there's some state testing you have to do to make sure that we properly flush it out and everything. Then you can go start swapping over services, is what we call it. So until that pipe is good, clean, we have our results back, and it's happy for the state, that's when you can physically unplug the meter and replug the meter back in. After all of that, they start playing in the curbs. So after that, you, before you can go really play in that road, get that road how you want it, there's a lot of these, we're replacing the curbs as they go along. So that's a concrete crew that comes in after, and you can't bring in your concrete crew until your services are in, otherwise you can't get past that curb part. After that curb, good curbs in there, that's when you start bringing in folks for your paving. So that paving, we've got really two different things in this project. We've got a mill, which is, it's a step up from the seal coat, but it's where they actually get into that two inches asphalt, dig it all up, mix it all back up, mix in some more tar essentially, some more asphalt in there, and press it back down, smooth, clean surface. Then there's another one that's reconstructed in place with a, actually go in and add some cement stabilization, some Portland cement, or lime, depending on what soil they find under there. Dig that out, that six inches, mix all that up, and then come back in and lay in the big chunks asphalt. So I, we've got, like I said, probably about, between water and sewer, about a mile of pipe laid on that project. So we're looking at mobilizing the paving crews, because we still have the curb to go in and all that, but the paving crews themselves, we're looking at in January. We're looking at hitting basically that whole area town all at once. The more streets you can get, the more efficient it is, there's only a certain number of mobilizations bid in the project. And also, you get bigger equipment. If, if you're doing a little three hundred foot chunk of road, the chances that BPI or Knife River brings their A-class team is minimal. So really, it's more efficient, and you end up getting a better product when you can do more at a time. So our current list, if it's wanted for streets that are gonna be hit, we're looking at doing Judson, Sycamore, Neal, Kettler, Horlock, Schumacher, Post Oak, Water, and more in the first batch paving. So that's the area that we're looking at there, and now we're, we're aiming for January is we're aiming for.
And usually in January, you don't do road resurfacing if it, if we're expecting it to be a colder weather winter, so it may not be till even March.
If, if the weather's not looking good, correct? But you hit that about November, usually, where you, you get out of the paving season, it's, it's right around the corner, and it's just getting those services in and trying to get a good chunk of roads in front of that paving crew. We'd rather wait. It'll end up in a better product, long term.
And you said that every customer that's getting a new water line or sewer line will get a new cleanout?
Uh, not the one at the house, but the one that usually gets buried right up beneath, uh, right behind the curb line. So we actually are putting ours in meter boxes, so that doesn't happen. But there's actually a tap right there, right before it goes past the curb, there's the one up at your house that your plumber hooks onto, there's one that our guys hook onto right there behind the curb, so it goes up to that point. And then there've been a couple of instances where it's had to go a little bit further because they ran goofy, or, you know, back when they did it in the fifties, they went off at some wild angle. But other, other than those cases, no, it stops there, right behind the curb.
So you're saying that, uh, we place the curves and everything, so where there are no curves, there will be, or during the streets that busting out curve and replacing?
It's more so the ones where there are some, you'll notice in town, there are areas where the curbs really off, or, you know, hitched up at a weird angle, or just broken. It, to go from a non-curb street to a curb street, actually takes a goodly chunk, behind that, you, so that curb's six inches tall, so all the grass behind it has to be six inches taller, and on top of that, that water that used to go into that ditch has to go somewhere. So you have to build storm boxes and storm culverts underneath that road, the entire length you want curb, usually.
So I guess, uh, you, my question was that the roads that you just mentioned, are all of them gonna have curves?
I do not remember off the top of my head, if they don't have a curb now, I don't believe there's any that we're adding major curbing to. So if there's a road you were thinking of and asking, that you had in mind there, and that it doesn't have curbs, let me know, I'll...
No, I was just trying to get a good, uh, understanding on it when you said curves. I thought that all the streets was, over there was getting curves now, but I, I just was trying to get understanding on it.
Yeah, no, it, it, most of those streets have curbs right now, most of them do. Um, I can't speak for one hundred percent of that list, I, I just can't, but the ones that have them, a lot of times where the curbs, there's some spots...
You just gotta repair the broken ones.
Repair the broken ones, take out the, the broken ones and put back in new curb. So a lot of those curbs that were put in at the time were those little six foot sections. So we're coming back in with more modern curb. Not, not the rollover curb you see down in the neighborhoods, but still that long.
John, the only one that it might add a curb is Horlock, those two blocks of Horlock?
I think that's only on one side, though, is, the other side's a ribbon curb.
The other one that's already had curb.
Yeah, and that one, it's not the classic curb, it's, it's a ribbon curb, so it's, it won't look any different, it won't be a classic step up. There, there is one area that we're just kind of shoring that road there, we're adding in a flat strip of concrete, and it's called a curb, called a ribbon curb, but it doesn't have that bump that you're used to seeing, it's still, all the water drains off into that ditch.
Uh, right there in front of, is, uh, I don't know, do you, um, that apartment, they're going down, you're going, uh, north, right in front of that, well, at one time it was called Busted Village, I don't know what it's called now, uh, what's the name of those apartments there?
New Victoria?
On, uh, okay, it's on Horlock?
On Horlock, I got my map up here, if y'all give me half a sec.
It was Busted Village, but I think they sold and renamed it.
That was on Victoria.
That's on Victoria.
Victoria? Okay, Vic, Victoria, okay. Right in front of that apartment, uh, was a concrete street. It's a bad, bad spot right there, is that gonna be repaired?
No, that area's not on this, at least within the CIP, we can make sure we have a work order for the street crews to deal with it, but that concrete street, that area of Victoria was not on this project.
Okay.
This project, there's a map that went out with, uh, uh, with the press release, but as well as utility billing, and the area we're dealing with there, actually, Victoria itself is untouched, but Horlock, it was from Schumacher down to Washington.
Kind of in the same area, yeah. And not all of those streets on the CIP have water and sewer going in, right? Some of them are just the street itself, correct?
The vast majority of them have water and sewer, not as many have, uh, storm, but I, let's see here, I think Fairway is about the only one that has no utility work. Resurfacing Fairway is the only one that has no utility work in front of it.
I can send back out to y'all that, um, we, we got the list and provided it to you, we can resend that out to you.
Yeah.
Did we add, sorry, did we add, um, water in, water in McNair because of replacing that sewer line through Ms. Berger's property? Are we doing anything with the road there?
The, that's actually where we're, that, that's where we, we're, you're talking about McNair and Kettler, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so down McNair, when they run that one sewer service, they're gonna cut out a trench probably about, I'd guess about this wide, and when they go back, they'll go back and patch that, it'll look similar to, uh, Hillside.
So it's, it, that's happening in the CIP and will be done when all the other roads in that area are done?
Correct, correct. Yeah, that's, that's the downhill side of that sewer, so it made the most sense to take care of it, that's why we...
Yeah.
...brought that to y'all. Start it now and just run it.
Thanks, sir.
Absolutely.
Any reports from council on boards or commissions? All right, couple things coming up here, uh, we've got our home opener with the Rattlers playing this Friday, playing Madisonville. Uh, there's also a circus going on out at the fairgrounds, so, I don't know, some people may want to go to the circus, I'll be at the ballgame. Uh, Bubba Can Cook with the Friends of Grimes County is coming up September eighth and ninth, Farmer's Market on the ninth, and then the Bonnie and Clyde musical on the ninth as well, and that's at Brosig, and you can go to, uh, the city's website or Facebook page in there to get, you can get your tickets online for the musical, Bonnie and Clyde musical, that's sponsored by the city and through Navasota ISD. And then coming up a little bit later in the month is a sipping shop downtown on the twenty-third of September. There's also a water notice, something about conserving water?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so, uh, we went to, I think Jennifer probably gets to speak, but volunteer, uh, stage one watering, um, I don't remember the odd and even...
So the, uh, I don't have that in front of me either, but we're, basically, it's a volunteer for water conservation, we're trying to, um, provide enough, uh, water to our citizens without having to step into the next stage of enforcing it. It's just, um, just to help us out, we are, it, it has been noticed, we were about one point nine to two million, I think it's, um, dropped down a little bit by just, you know, having people cut back on, uh, irrigation twice a week, fixing some water leaks, um, uh, running toilets and so on and so forth. So that's just, uh, something to kind of help out with, um, the, the amount of water that's being, um, pumped out to everybody.
So the next step would be to, to make it, to enforce it?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
If we, if we had to.
Yes, sir.
If we had to, yes, sir. So we're, we're trying to, to be proactive on, on this, uh, water conservation, and we don't want to go into the next levels of having to enforce it.
My heart's already dead.
Thank you to everyone that has, you have seen a, have seen a difference, so that's good.
And just to put it out there, even street addresses are Sunday and Thursday, and odd street numbers are Saturdays and Wednesdays.
And that's after six and before nine?
Yes, sir.
Preferably midnight.
Six P M., six P M. and nine and a half.
City is also, um, cutting back on our irrigation as far as how long we, you know, water the football fields and the soccer fields, we've cut back on that as well. Uh, we're also gonna, um, not flush the hydrants, um, in September to, um, and reduce some of the water loss that we, we have to, uh, that we do on every month on that as well.
Item number five is consideration and possible action to enter to an agreement with R W Harden and Associates to provide, provide design services for the new water well number eight in city Navasota for the amount of one hundred sixty-five thousand three hundred dollars.
Good evening, mayor and, mayor and council, this is part of our east side, ongoing east side water plant project, it's a budgeted item, um, there's a lot of reports and aquifer modeling, et cetera, that goes into actually getting a new public water supply well done, bunch of state recommendation, or state requirements and reports as well. Uh, Ms. Liz Ferry here, she, uh, was the one who did the groundwater availability study that y'all saw back in May, um, she's also the one who deals with Bluebonnet Groundwater Conservation District the most, so we went ahead and decided to hire her on full time, or hire on for that project, um, as the full person for that project as opposed to just a subcontractor. Um, the, uh, yeah, that was about to turn into a totally different announcement. But with that, with that, she'll be, um, actually have construction oversight as well, she works very closely with local well drillers, um, so she'll be out there sampling the water, making sure that she gives us her best recommendation for where to actually put the screens in the well, how to complete the well, all that, it's eyes in the field for all of those things. Y'all have any questions, she's here to answer them, too.
This is just to design it, this is to not do any of the work as actually drilling it or buying the material?
No, this is all the thinking side of things, so she'll be oversight of those guys when they're actually drilling it. Um, she'll be taking water samples, trying to figure out, I know in the study, we talked about two different possible aquifers, she's the person who's gonna be able to tell us, can we complete a well in the lower one, so we can step right next to it and do a second one later on in the upper one. So she's the expert on that, what the, how the water quality is, how much water we can get out of it.
So this could be a two for one?
We'd have to hire again.
She's saying yes, I'm wondering.
Absolutely, she'll get hired again, happily.
A little discount maybe.
I mean, since you're there already.
But, but that is our hope, is that we'll be able to sink down into the Catahoula. It's not always the best, so it's kind of location specific, and you're not gonna know till you get your hole drilled down in there, but we're really hoping we can get a good Catahoula well and a Jasper well. At there, we, a site for Jasper well in the future, when that budget comes up.
John, when was our last time we had a water well dug, you know, when the last one was?
Ninety-seven.
And prior to that?
I, I don't know the second one, I know we worked on, what we call well four was drilled in sixty-eight.
All right, so, to mayor and council, uh, it's been a while since we've done wells, um, with, some of the issues we've had this year are already with some of our water wells, um, this is much needed, uh, in order to move forward with drilling, uh, we call it wa, uh, well number eight, but it more than likely to be a location for well number eight and nine. We've issued debt, uh, for this, uh, as part of our debt issuance last year, um, so this, again, this is part of the water tower, water plant, and water well on the east side, um, this is much needed, and this is just to get us, um, to the next phase of starting that project.
First step, first step. So, uh, just piggybacking off that, just real fast, uh, there's a little bit of a misnomenclature on our wells, we call them wells two through seven right now, uh, well two is actually the thirteenth well drilled by Navasota. So up to ninety-seven, for that hundred years we were selling water, we drilled eighteen wells, and only the last six are online. We're trying to get that next one and keep building that.
Joe, let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
Just here thinking. How far you have to dig to make sure that will be a good site for a well?
So it's not so much, and you can step, step, step in on me if I start misspeaking, it's not so much about, uh, how deep for a good one, we actually go below where most residential's are, there's something called the Jasper Aquifer, we're expecting to hit it at two, three hundred feet, and it's known good quality, but known not as productive. So there's another one about seven, eight hundred feet, we're thinking we're gonna hit it, it's all underground, there's no nearby well to tell us exactly when we're gonna hit it, that's called the Catahoula Sands. That's where, um, our well number two is actually a Catahoula well, we have them in our system, but we're hoping we can get down into there, and it's not so much about how deep you go for the water quality, when you get to Catahoula, it's just what sands are around you. So what sands were in there, you know, twenty million years ago when that sand went down, seven hundred foot down, what kind of minerals were around it, depends on what's been soaking into the water, and was that clean sand, a lot of times it is, sometimes it's not, that's why we want to make sure she's here and making that call for us.
What's the worst thing that could happen?
Dry hole, always, um, tho, those, those are the things, it's like talking about, if you're a welder, you don't say the word crack when you're talking about a cracked weld, you just don't say the word dry hole, but it shouldn't happen, the Jasper is really dependable, so the worst case is, we get that Jasper well, it produces a few hundred or a couple hundred gallons per minute worth of production, and we have to lay in a pipeline to get away from it, to drill another Jasper somewhere around that area, to keep supporting growth.
Okay.
Have you ever had a dry hole in the Jasper?
No. No, I, I don't think, dry, dry isn't necessarily a good term, um, productive, so you're, you're thinking more production and how, how much water can you produce?
Volume, yes.
And so, as far as dry, um, that wouldn't be the worst, the worst case would be, you can't get the production you need from either aquifer, and so you have to plug the hole and you have to go somewhere else, or you get half the production that you can, you need, and you have to drill elsewhere and make up that.
Now, if you have to dig elsewhere, how far from that site would you have to go?
Theoretically, you could go thirty feet, um, if you can't produce, if you want to produce from the same zone, you gotta go, a rule of thumb is about twenty-five hundred feet apart, but if you're in differing zones, you can go as close as, really, it's just, how can your equipment pull in and, and work on both sites? And so it's, it's really a surface logistics, um, and you don't want to drill and interfere with each other physically with the bore holes, but, so we just try to make sure that we're that far apart, thirty to fifty feet.
That's if we can get into the Catahoula and the Jasper.
Right.
So if we can, it's about a half mile away, so that this well, when it's pumping, doesn't suck down the water out of this well as well.
Um, what is our goal for gallons per minute?
Lead two to three hundred out of the Jasper, and four to five hundred out of the Catahoula is what we were thinking?
Yeah, I think...
Somewhere in there?
Yeah, four to five hundred was the max rate, is what I heard.
Okay.
Mister mayor, move to approve entering into an agreement with R W Harden and Associates to provide design services for water well number eight in the amount of one sixty-five three hundred. Motion by Miss Ford, second by Miss Peterson, to approve the agreement with R W Harden and Associates for design services, water well number eight, one hundred sixty-five thousand three hundred dollars. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thinking none, item carries?
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Item number six, budget workshop for the city council and staff to discuss and review the city of Navasota proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. City council may discuss numerous broad topics such as public safety, infrastructure, development of community services, parks and rec, public works, administration, utilities, which includes water, natural gas, and wastewater, financial services, technology, strategic plan, human resources, marketing, communications, tourism, capital projects, and other matters related to proposed budget. May reach broad consensus on topics related to proposed budget, but no final decision or vote will occur at this meeting. And just for information, the annual budget was filed, uh, in the city secretary's office on... budget was filed in the city secretary's office on Monday, August seventh. Staff presented a proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four on August fourteenth, city council meeting. This is a follow-up to the proposed fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget to allow council to publicly discuss the budget prior to September eleventh, public hearing on the budget and tax rate. Staff has included the FY twenty-three, twenty-four budget workshop presentation. I can let, let you pick up from here, I suppose. Just do wanna mention that in April, there was a strategic plan, planning session that took place, and over that period of time, there were discussions and meetings with staff, with council, and, and citizens to determine a lot of the things that have come into the budget for this year.
A couple of things real quick.
Mayor, don't forget we have...
Yeah, you got, when you get your comments?
Yeah, I, I can give the opportunity if Ms. Richardson or Ms. Copeland, did y'all want to speak at this time, or it's up to?
Again, Deborah Richardson, twelve oh-two Lane Street in Navasota. First, I mean, I have some problems with the budget, but I would like to say first that I think the city manager and staff did an excellent job in presenting it. It was four hundred pages for three hundred and eighty-five pages, but it had a lot of detail. I was able to do searches and find what I was looking for. So, I think the job on the budget was excellent. I do think because of its length, you know, that's why it took four hours to present. I think that next time, you should still keep the four hours or whatever is, is necessary. But, I think the, the voting should have been delayed to the following day as was originally scheduled. I think there was a lot of information in there, and I know that I had some questions and things. So, I think next time, if you would just keep the second day. The biggest problems that I have is I don't think we can afford a lot of the things at this time. So, I'm not saying the ideas are bad. I'm saying we can't afford it at this time because we have gas, water, and other things going up, you know? The second, the, the second, you wanting to hire, I guess it's the, I'm not, I, I can't remember the, the title, but it's the economic thing for tourism. You had a, a person in there. I don't think we can afford to do that at this time. I don't think we need an assistant city manager at this time. I do think we need to hire one additional full-time person for the library and two part-time people. The reason is this, there's only two full-time people there. When one person is sick or on vacation, that means that one person is left at the library. If it's the current librarian who is a salaried person, she chooses to work through her lunch and leave the library open. Because between the noon and one o'clock hour is when ordinary people come to do copies and to print. The other person, if the other person is there, the library is closed. So, you'll go to the library and it'll have a sign on the door, "We're closed from noon to one." Or, this past Friday, the library had to be closed at four-thirty because the librarian had to come to a city meeting. There's no one to cover. Also, the way the staffing is left, normal working people cannot bring their kids to the library. It closes at five-thirty except on Monday evenings when it has that special program, and it's not open on Saturdays. My proposal would let the library be open half a day on Saturday. You could open it at, you know, in the morning on Monday instead of one o'clock the way it is open now. Now, the other big thing for me is that the library is not accredited. When I first came to Navasota from Houston, I was living half and half kinda Navasota in Houston. I was using what's called a TechShare card. If you are an accredited library, it lets you go to other libraries in the state. Navasota wasn't accredited library at that time. That meant that I could use the TechShare card to check books out. Because our librarian is not certified, you can't do that, okay? And, I can't do inner library loans. I can't go and ask her. So, I'm asking that you keep in the budget the eighteen thousand dollars over two years to get the library certification. And, I understand that we just had a workshop that said you didn't wanna do that in, in advance. But, in this case, I think it's a special case because it keeps our library open as a full library. So, I think that I would like you to consider, because that was in the budget, I'd like you to kinda leave that in the budget, okay, for, for that reason. By the way, our library serves not just Navasota, but all of Grimes County. I checked with the Brazos, the Brazos County libraries and College Station and all of that, and they will charge our citizens, me, twenty-five dollars a year, which I'm gonna pay. Because even if we go ahead and pay the eighteen thousand dollars for the certification, it'll take two years before our library can become certified. So, if I wanna take advantage of libraries, I'm gonna pay twenty-five dollars a year and use the Brazos County library for inner library loans if I want a book that's, you know, no library has all books. So, that's one thing I'd like you to consider. We raise up our city with things like Birthday Bash and all of those things. And technically, Birthday Bash and festivals lose money, but I don't think of it like that. I think of it as we're paying for the city's recognition to, to be a better city. And, I think we should think of our library in the same way, okay? So, I, I really think we, we need to do that for the libraries. In the budget, I don't know what a flash vote survey is. It was for eleven thousand eight hundred dollars. I don't know what kinda survey you need that costs that much. There was a second survey called citywide survey. I don't know if it was the same survey, just different name, but that's a lot of money. You might wanna put an ad in the paper and ask people's opinions. And, I have to say, full disclosure, I'm freelance for that paper, so, so you, so you know. So, again, these, these aren't bad ideas, I don't think. They just are not affordable. The other big problem I have, two big problems, this golf course out at August Horse Park, okay? I, most people can't afford golf. We just, that's a lot of money to pay to upgrade for tournaments and things where if you go and walk on the park through the path, you'll see rebar sticking up out of the sidewalks and chunks of concrete missing, okay? So, I, I think there, I think the, the city just needs to be more aware of what's around. So, I'm gonna suggest that once a year, the city manager and department heads ride every single street in Navasota. Just get in the car and just ride. No fair going down the big street looking side to side, but just check it out. Not, I mean, just for discovery. You might see something that needs fixing that you didn't know. And, I can say that once the city has been made aware of something, they fix it quickly. I recently made the city aware of some tattered signs you couldn't read, and just really quickly, they, they, it was fixed. So, once you become aware of something, you, you know, it gets done. So, these are, those are the main things. I would say about the parking, I know that you're gonna build a parking lot somewhere. You might consider getting some money for it. If you cover it, you could probably get some money for it. And, it's always easy to, you know, to get the money upfront rather than offer something for free and then try to charge for it. So, you know, you might think about, you know, putting a cover. Now, I understand you'll have to put a fence and a gate around it because we don't want the police to become, you know, meter maids or anything like that. But, something to consider. And, and I guess if we had grant money and the time, it would be nice to put a parking garage. You could get, you know, more bang for your buck on the same spot. And, I know where I used to work, I paid to park in the garage even though it meant walking further to the building where I worked, and there was free faculty, staff parking right there. So, anyway, these are just ideas. And, again, I, I don't want the city to think, I think the, the budget was bad. I think it's not good at this time. Thank you.
Ms. Copeland?
Mr. Mayor, while the, Ms. Copeland is coming, I think that Ms. Richardson said we voted on the budget.
No, we didn't vote. No, it's just that we, we were just trying to get through it so we didn't have to come back the next day.
Right.
But, all council was in agreement to continue, so.
All right. Dea Copeland, one thousand Grimes Street, Navasota. Thank y'all for posting our budget online. I say "our" budget. Thank you. The public can see it that way. It's great. I spent some time reviewing it, and now I just have some questions. I'll ask my questions and then sit down for the answers and the explanations. On the general fund expenditure slide for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, why were there thirteen departments that were over budget for a total of eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars? Twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four budget, boy, there's an obvious shortfall between the revenue and the expenses. Rather than raising the water, gas, and wastewater rates in this bad economy that Ms. Richardson was referring to, are there other ways to reduce the shortfall? What formula was used to calculate the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four expense budget? Was it an across-the-board percentage increase to the base budget? Did the base budget begin at the over-budgeted end-of-year expenditures? Professional fees, they're listed in many departments. For twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, there was a total of seven hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars listed in professional fees. And, in addition, another six hundred and fifty-three thousand listed in professional fees for the water, gas, and wastewater. That's an awful lot of money in professional fees. And, then for twenty-twenty-three, it got, there's more. Under just the routine departments, there's one million one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, plus then for water, gas, and wastewater, another one point three million dollars. So, can anybody explain to me what professional fees are and then why the major increases? Because it's, it's not broken out, so I don't know what's in there. Again, same thing, miscellaneous fees in many departments. There's line items for miscellaneous fees. Twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, there was three hundred and twenty-one thousand spent in miscellaneous fees. And, then again, that's budgeted for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four. And, then when I started totaling up miscellaneous fees for the hotel motel line items, the EDC, the water, gas, and the wastewater, my calculator exploded. So, did my mind. It just blew my mind. Is there a chart of accounts to help explain the miscellaneous category? So, that just kinda, you know, I mean, is that something that we can work on to, to reduce the professional fees and the miscellaneous categories to maybe not, you know, to not be so large and maybe explain them and we understand them a little bit better? And, maybe then, you know, that offsets some of the deficit in the, in the revenue and expenses for this year. In addition, there's two hundred and sixty-seven thousand for wayfinding signs in the budget. But, you know, a month ago, the citizens stood here and said they weren't too much in favor of the wayfinding signs. So, can that be eliminated? How, you know, I mean, I guess my last question is how do these utility bill and budget increases directly benefit the citizens of Navasota? I mean, directly benefit them. And, again, thanks for posting our budget online. I appreciate it. So, I'll wait for your answers.
Yeah, go.
All right. Pass these down. So, Mayor and Council, I'll kinda address some of the citizens' comments real quick, briefly. Just so you'll know, any resident that wants to have, have any questions about budget, feel free, come make an appointment with me, come up and see me if I'm available. I don't mind speaking to you about these questions so we don't have to get bogged down into a bunch of the weeds in the budget. But, I'll be glad to answer some of the questions that some of our residents did post. Ms. Richardson brought up some, some great points that was brought up to me earlier about the library. So, I've reached out to the library director. The library director cannot be here tonight due to the library being open tonight. However, her response was, the library has in the past tried to be open on Saturday. Unfortunately, there, there wasn't a lot of attendance on Saturdays. That's the primary reason that they moved it over to being open late on Mondays. The, the library, according to the library director, is open on Saturday mornings when we have, or Saturdays when we have the farmer's market. However, it's not utilized that often. But, she is in agreement that can, on a, on a trial basis, to look at possibly one Saturday a, a month, maybe from eight to noon to try to open it up and be able to see what, what kind of service we get and publicize that. So, definitely, staff is up for looking at some options about providing library services outside of the hours they currently provide. As it addresses related to the accreditation, so, there were several staff that presented items related to things in the budget that were gonna be handled in a different direction. One of those was library director for accreditation. We thought that, myself thought that the best way to handle that is through the tuition reimbursement program because, again, that benefits the city as well as the employee, and so we thought that was the, a, a good route to take. In addition to that, we, we have successfully hired our, our new library clerk for that position. I believe this week is start, September fif, on the fifth?
Fifth.
September fifth is the start date. That employee has a master's of library science, and so, we will be moving forward with becoming accredited. So, we do not have to wait until the library director receives that. So, the library director will be able to move forward with getting accreditation for the library. So, that was something we, we thought about when we were going through the interview processes and through the hiring processes, that we can start that immediately. That does not curtail the library director from attaining accreditation for herself to becoming a, getting her master's in library science. So, again, we are gonna support any employee that wants to further their education. It's just gonna be through a different avenue. So, that addresses the library. The flash survey, if you'll remember, earlier this year, I, I came to you and asked about citywide type survey. The, the price there was a little bit extravagant, and so, twenty thousand dollars for it. So, our marketing communications director had located what they call flash survey. It's what a lot of people within the marketing and communications departments are using to reach out to residents. The reason it's a little bit more expensive is because we did decide to propose going forward with the dual language, and so it has a Spanish version in there so we can actually provide surveys to our residents to be able to reach out to them in Spanish, which was a, a great feature. Again, part of the strategic plan that was identified was trying to, to reach our community to find out what their needs wants, how they, how they receive information, and this is just an avenue to be able to reach out. So, as I mentioned previously, the budget that's being proposed addresses the majority of the strategic plan goals that you have established for the staff. As it relates to the golf discor, the disc golf course and, and just parks in general, I think at our last meeting, I had discussion, many of our parks are, been neglected just as much as our streets and our utilities. And, so, these aren't repairs and maintenance items. These are full rehabs that needs to be done. So, I, I'm, I'm sure that there probably are some areas out there at the disc golf course where the sidewalk needs to be fixed, and we, we have about forty-five thousand dollars for sidewalk replacement that we can utilize that. However, we have chosen to use those to replace residents' sidewalks that are in need, in need of some replacement. As it relates to the parking lot, so, within this current year budget, I, I announced last week that the city closed on purchasing the Navasota Theater Alliance property adjacent to city hall, kinda back behind here. That is going to become a city parking lot, a city, not, not a public parking lot. It's a city-owned parking lot. The primary place is for PD and some staff to be able to park their vehicles. Currently, right now, when people come to city hall, the employees and PD take up the majority of the parking. There are very limited parking except for out here. And, so the idea is to move a lot of our police vehicles over there in a secured area and any other city vehicles. And, if there's room for staff, we don't, I don't know the total amount that we think we'll be able to get in there, but we're working on that. But, that is when it relates to, to the parking lot. And, so I think that kinda addressed a lot of Ms. Richardson's... And so I think that kind of addressed a lot of Ms. Richardson's concerns. However, Ms. Copeland's a little bit different here. So she went a lot of different things. So I want to make sure that council and the public understands when we talk about a balanced budget. A balanced budget cannot be revenues minus expenditures equals zero. So if you do that, a budget is a projection of what you think you're going to receive in revenue and what you expect to expend in the entire year. And ideally, it would be nice to get to zero. But what happens if you had a policy that says our budget, balanced budget is revenues minus expenditures equals zero? What happens in those years when your revenue comes in higher and your expenditures come in lower? You start gaining fund balance, and your fund balance starts growing, your checking account. So we have a fund balance requirement of 25% or 90 days. And so we have to make sure that we meet that fund balance requirement. So if you had that as a policy that said revenues have to equal expenditures, then the year that, for instance, in the water fund last year or the current year we're in, we issued debt and we received those loan proceeds. So revenue went up, but we haven't been able to spend all those funds this year because we're just now starting on the water well design part of it. So next year is where the expense occurs. Well, if that theory was held in place, we can't do that. So revenue, balanced budget is your beginning fund balance plus your revenues minus your expenditures. The ending fund balance needs to meet the policy. And the policy is 25% fund balance. So within the current proposed budget, our fund balance for the general fund is ending at around 4.3 million. Our requirement is only 3.7. So we have excess fund balance above what we're saying we need to have of 540,000. So that's just in generalization when we talk about the expenditures. When we talk about, some of the questions was about, why is, like for instance, personnel services for a department for end-of-year estimate? End-of-year estimate is what we think we're going to end this year. Why is that end-of-year estimate higher than what was proposed budget? And the reason is, last year, you approved around a little over a million dollars for us to implement a new compensation plan. And that money was budgeted in non-departmental, okay? Because I don't know which department, we didn't have the study done. And so we had no idea which, how much each department was going to get. So we had to, the idea is any budgeted cost related to salary benefits is put in non-departmental. We budget in non-departmental. And then throughout the year, after decisions made, whether it's a merit increase, so HR and the city manager and department head sign off on this employee has done a great job, they're going to get a 3.5% merit increase. Or as this year, we're saying, proposing that everybody grade seven and below is going to receive a dollar per hour. Once those changes are made, they're put into the system, and they will start expending those through their department. But from the budget standpoint, at the end of the year, next year, when we're looking on next, working on next year's budget, under end-of-year budget estimates is going to be zero in non-departmental because we've now moved that budget down to be more in line with where the actual expenditures are occurring. So what happens is, your end-of-year estimate is higher than your budget. So that's why you see some of that. In general, you do not, you do not want your end-of-year estimate, total year-end estimate for the general fund or any of the funds to be higher than your budget unless there is a reason why it should be. So for instance, this year, we are proposing, our end-of-year estimate is around $14 million, but the approved budget that you approved is 13.2. The difference, about 800,000. If you remember, a couple of meetings ago, the chief told you, the fire chief told you, we received our new fire truck and had to pay it. Well, that was already, that was being factored in, and that was paid last year. But we didn't get it. We actually had to pay it this year. And so it was in the end-of-year estimate for last year, but we didn't get it, and we didn't get it till, it took two years to get it. So we had to pay it this year. So now your end-of-year estimate's higher. If you remember in the audit report that the auditors provided you, they provided you an unassigned fund balance, and there was about 1.8 million that was related to fire and equipment that was in designated fund balance. You add those two together to get with what fund balance, your beginning fund balance was. So those are the only reasons, unless we come to council and do a budget amendment and we amend the budget. But for purposes of the budgets, council has the authority for fund budgets. So fund budgets, you set the budget for the general fund, for all of the funds, the water fund, the sewer fund, all of those. The city manager has the authority to come in and move those budgets within the funds to line items or departments. And so that, when you see your ordinance over the next month, that you have, will be asked to approve for the budget, you'll be approving the total. You won't be approving how much the fire department gets or how much the police department gets. You'll be doing in total. And so we are providing you, here's what we are thinking. Because again, the budget is a working document. If, for instance, we have a savings on a project. So for instance, if we have, we bid out the street project, and the street project's $400,000, but we budgeted 500. That 100,000, if we have another line item that goes over, we're able to make that adjustment. So just kind of get those categories straightened out so you understand that. The other question was about miscellaneous. There's a lot of miscellaneous. Probably should have re-titled it miscellaneous, but there's a couple of things in miscellaneous. Prior to me coming, the previous finance director recorded memberships and dues and travel and training as part of personnel services. Personnel services should only be your salaries and your benefits, period. Because those are, those where you really want to know, those are where you can know that you have a hard time cutting those unless you're going to lay somebody off or unless you're increasing personnel. So we broke that out, we brought that down, and we put it under miscellaneous. So under miscellaneous, those are your subscriptions, your dues, any memberships, and that's for the entire organization. Professional fees, professional fees is anybody we pay another service to. So let's use, for example, development services. Development services, we hire a third-party inspector or a third-party plan reviewer or engineering firm. That comes under professional services. The amount that we pay Grimes County Appraisal District for appraisals as well as the collections is part of professional fees. Our auditors, professional fees. Any, for the consultant that we provided for strategic plan, professional fees. When we went and created the TURS, the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, that is professional fee. So those are engineers, they're just what it is, professional fees. They're paying a third party to do something for us. And so that's what falls under professional fees. Can't think of a lot of the other questions, but I do want to pass out some information. Want to kind of start off of where we are right now and what is different in the budget. So as one council member's alluded to, we did have the resignation of our marketing communications director. So at the previous meeting, you provided staff the direction and authority to, for the HR director and I, and myself, to start publishing, publicizing and moving forward with hiring processes for the proposed new positions. However, since we had that position resigned, we have not posted anything for the marketing multimedia specials. But we did start with, on the marketing and communications director position. We have, it's been advertised. We actually had one interview today. We've got two on Wednesday. Not a lot of people that are trickling in for it, but we are looking at that and hope that by the first of the fiscal year, we'll be able to get somebody in and won't have too much of a lag in that. But we, our grant coordinator has graciously decided to step up and help out with some of that in an interim basis. And so she's going to be starting that today. So she's helping out with that. In addition to that, the fire chief came to me and has requested that we do a dollar-per-hour increase extended to our part-time firefighters. So in order to do some retention efforts for them, he figured out that one hour with benefits and everything is about $11,000. However, we're going to be able to cover that with budgeted part-time costs. And so when he budgeted, he wasn't expecting on getting both of his firefighters proposed to be in the budget. And so he made sure that he had some funds in there for part-time. And so we're going to be able to cover that. But I just want to make sure that you understand that's an additional request that wasn't presented the last time. He did show me today that some other competition in the area are increasing that up to $23 per hour, which is, hopefully, we can still maintain what we have. Because the plan is, last year, we added a firefighter. We have currently, we have three shifts, A, B, and C. We have two paid firefighters on each of those shifts. And we've been using part-time to be able to get a third person, hopefully, on each of those shifts. But it's been very difficult. So last year, you approved the addition of one person. And so that person was maybe added to shift A. So we still got B and C to do. And so this year, two of the nine positions that's being proposed is to fund the completion of that shift. And so many years ago, I don't even know how many years ago, the standard was three firefighters per shift, per engine, per truck. That is now shifted nearly four to five. And so we're just now even getting up to the old standard. The chief, what his plan is, is to utilize the part-time to be able to get up to four, for the shift there. So that's the only changes that I have, I guess, made since our last discussion. So I did pass out some information there. Just wanted to briefly talk about some things in here. So I know that there's been some discussion about ways to reduce the budget. And so one of the things I know that was, spoke about, I don't know if it was Ms. Richardson or Ms. Copeland or both, was I want to make sure that council and the public understands the addition of the nine employees has nothing to do with the utility rates. So if you do not agree to fund the nine, any of the positions, the utility rates have to be, have to be done. The utility rate consultant came in and spoke to y'all back in December, January timeframe, provided you the analysis of what is needed to be able to get the fund balance up to what it needs to be in order to move the utility funds forward the way that they should be in order to pay for capital and the need to continue the operations in the water, sewer, and gas. That proposal was two scenarios. The first scenario was, let's implement in March with a March increase and then come back and do another increase in October 1st. Council chose not that option. They said, hey, let's wait, let's do it all in October. And I understand I gave percentages last time. Maybe that was probably, that was my mistake. I supposedly shouldn't have gave so much percentages as what dollars that was because percentages kind of scares people. It's just, it's part of the way the presentation was done. And so the utility rates, as again, they have to be, they have to be done. If they're not done, there are consequences. And I want to make sure council understands what consequences could be. Consequences, you've already heard that we've already got issues with, at the wastewater treatment plant. We've already got, there's, our infrastructure in the city has been neglected for years. If we do not find a way to start paying for and fixing these things and bringing them up, we're going to be in a dire hurt of need. Right now, with the growth that's coming, we have to get a water tower up. We have to get a water plant up. We have to get a water well. And I'm stressing the word "have to." But in order to pay for that, these rates have to be put in place. Again, as I mentioned before, the way that I do finances is we issue debt. And debt is paid for by future taxpayers, ratepayers. Not the ratepayers who are in this room today. They will be a part of that, but as the city grows, those people will contribute to the payments. So we did an average, the average for a, from August to July, an average resident uses around 6,200 gallons of water per month. Average sewer usage is around 4,300 gallons. The average natural gas is around 2.27 MSF. Please don't ask me what MSF stands for. Based on the proposed rate increases, the average resident will experience a monthly increase of $27.13 on the utility rates themselves. As mentioned before, Republic Services has their annual increase based on the CPI. Now that was, I mentioned before, was 7.7%. That means there's an additional $1.69 added to that $27.13. So total increase for resident for, on the utility side related to water, sewer, gas, and trash is $28.82. The other part of the water rates is that we're implementing volumetric rate tiers. And so instead of having to do voluntary stage one or mandatory stage two restrictions, you really probably don't have to start putting those measures in place when you have volumetric rate tiers. Because those that want green, green grass and that have large lots and want to water twice a day for hours upon hours a day, they are going to pay for those, that usage. So anything over 15,000 gallons of water is going to pay a lot more than the average resident that's using only 6,200 gallons of water. So I want to make sure that you understand that the water, sewer, and natural gas are all separate funds. They all separate, they are just like their own business. They have to charge the rates to pay for the services. Water, it pays for all the water services that we provide to our residents and to our businesses as well as to our industrial area. Sewer, just like I said, it is for upkeep of our sewer treatment plant. Natural gas, natural gas is a two-pronged phase. Every resident pays 100% of the cost of gas. Earlier this year, we were able to enter into a really good three-year contract. We were able to nail that down. That rate was around 10, 15, something percent less than what we were currently having to pay because we are on a variable rate. So we got that locked in for three years. So resident pays 100% of that cost. But with that, there's operations costs. And once that gas comes into our lines, we have to maintain it. So that means staff to go around and make sure that the gas lines are working during cold weather splits to make sure that the gas flow is going correctly. And with that, in addition to maintaining the CIP projects, there is a need for an increase for that. And so those are the pieces. When fund balance runs out of these, that means you're, when you start pulling down on fund balance, that's when you're not able to issue debt. So if you want to not increase any of these rates, when you do need to issue debt and the rating agencies see that, hey, you've tapped into your required fund balance, they're going to mark you down and you're going to pay higher interest cost on that. Or they might not even approve the issuance of the debt. Currently, right now, the general fund does not subsidize these funds at all. The water, sewer, and gas pay a franchise fee to the general fund just like Entergy, just like MidSouth, just like CenturyLink, and just like Optimum does, franchise fee to the general fund. In addition to that, as I mentioned before, the, each of the utility funds here, there are staff that are in the general fund that support each of these funds. So Ms. Peggy does the hiring for the water, sewer, and gas. And there are some employees that are in the general fund that support that. So the financial services, financial services, we have utility billing clerks. So we got three utility billing clerks and the meter technician. All of those service utilities. So a portion of their salaries gets charged there. But to say that the utilities are, that general fund is subsidizing the water funds, is, or the utility funds is incorrect, nor is it that the utility funds are subsidizing the general fund. They're each their own unit. And so adding any of the nine positions does not affect the utility funds except for the one wastewater treatment operator too that we're adding. But again, that's a small amount, but we need an additional person to be able to continue operating the wastewater treatment plant. At some point within the five-year plan is we're going to need, if growth occurs, we're going to need another wastewater treatment plant. You can't wait until the wastewater treatment plant's built and then decide, oh, by the way, we need to hire somebody to get them trained to be able to operate. We need to have that person onboard knowing how to operate. So I just want to make sure, before we get too far into the budget discussions, that you understand the difference between the rates and the personnel. Because those are, they do not, they're not connected at all.
I would like to clarify that their rates are not increasing by twenty-eight dollars. They're increasing to?
No. So, no. So they, a resident will have an increase, a monthly increase of twenty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents.
Okay, that's what I was.
And that's for all, water, sewer, and natural, that's for all of them added together. So natural gas will increase by four dollars and fifty-four cents. Sewer will increase by eleven dollars and forty-five cents. And water will increase by eleven dollars and fourteen cents. You add all those together, it's twenty-eight, and a dollar sixty-nine for Republic Services. That all adds up to twenty-eight eighty-two. As I was mentioning earlier before, sorry on that. So I've been asked to look at if there's ways to reduce the budget anywhere from one to one-point-five million. And I wanted to bring council's attention to, within the budget document that you provided here, in the very first couple pages, first eleven, twelve pages, there was a chart in there. There's a million forty-six thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty dollars of items that we, that's in the proposed budget that are considered one-time cost expenditures. These are what we call not recurring expenditures. One of those, some of those items are, there's a couple of three-eighty agreements. Three-eighty agreements is chapter three-eighty, which the state law allows you to do participation in certain developments. So one of those is related to the P.A. Smith Hotel, related to the sidewalk around the parking lot. So once that's paid, it's done. It's over. There's another three-eighty agreement related to the participation in the county road next to the Jack-in-the-Box. Again, that was the one where the developer asked for participation. The city said, okay, we'll participate a third. The developer participated a third, and then the county participated a third. County chose not to participate, but the city did not take on the county's one-third portion. We still kept that a third, and so that's the remaining amount for that. There is two-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand, eight-hundred-and-fourteen dollars that's been set aside to purchase three parcels in the downtown area for, from Union Pacific Railroad. Whether that deal happens or not, I don't know at this point, but that is a one-time cost. All of the proposed supplemental requests, there's a total of one, four-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars of one-time cost items, whether it's a laptop, whether it's a cellphone, whether it's outfitting one of our patrol vehicles or any of the equipment for personnel. And also, anything related to, I think there was some one-time costs related for in the Navasota Center to put the blinds, ceiling fans, and some tables and chairs. One-time costs related to some other IT technology items for Wi-Fi within all the city facilities. So those are one-time costs, all of those, as well as the fire, SABA cylinders that are needing to be replaced of seventy thousand. There's some rehab work on the fire engine number eighty-five that the fire chief spoke about last time. We're hoping seventy-five thousand dollars will get that. You know, you take that seventy-five plus the forty that we hope that we're going to get from selling it, we'll be able to get that fire engine up and going. That's one-time cost. There is a one-time cost, the purchase of a UTV, a utility vehicle, for Navasota PD using state seizure funds. So once we sell some state seized vehicles, using of those funds to purchase a UTV, that's a one-time cost as well as finishing out, outfitting patrol vehicles with some capital items for the patrol rifles. I think many meetings ago, I talked about the police department. Previously, it stored all of their rifles in the back of their units. And so knowing that that's not, that's a huge safety issue for our officers if they roll up on a shooting that's occurring, they shouldn't have to tell the person shooting, hold on while I go to the back of my vehicle and get my rifle. The rifles are right there beside them. So that's the remaining amount to outfit those. And also, one-time cost for the proposed charter election, twenty-six thousand. That all adds up to, right at a million forty-six thousand. As I mentioned before, the proposed budget has a required reserve of twenty-five percent fund balance, which is three-point-seven-five-one. And the projected fund balance at September thirtieth next year is nearly at four-point-three million, which is five-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars more than the required twenty-five percent fund balance. That's about where we were last year when we came to the council and proposed. That's about where we're at. By, if we, if you do decide you want to reduce the budget by a million or one-point-five million, your excess fund balance will increase to one-point-five to over two million dollars. And that would raise your proposed fund balance percentage from twenty-eight-point-six percent where we're at now, which is above the twenty-five percent, all the way to possibly thirty-seven-point-eight to forty-two-point-nine. And so with that, if that's the case, I want to ask the council, why? Because ideally, fund balance is fund balance. You have a fund balance requirement. You're meeting your fund balance requirement. So if you have excess, we do have excess, why do we want to have more excess? And so I was asked to come up with some possible decreases in the budget. I've listed these. These are, if you ask me where to cut, these are where I'm going to cut. And I will tell you that only one of the nine positions is in this list. The first thing, as I think Councilmember Peterson told me, she wasn't able to be at the last meeting when we went over the survey and asked her to review it. She reviewed it. And her comment was, if you think, if you believe that you really need a survey, I'm all in favor for it. But if you don't, then I'm not. What I have submitted to you is what I believe as the CEO of this business is needed for the city to succeed. And so that's the number-one thing I'm saying, cut. So, yeah, there are some things that the residents did propose that are considered maybe bad ideas, but it's not a bad idea. It is something that you have established within the strategic plan. The budget being proposed, again, has been put together based on addressing the goals and objectives you've established for myself and staff. The next item is reducing, is not doing the purchase of the three parcels from Union Pacific, two-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand. The next item on the list, I don't want to be the city manager that did this, but Texas Birthday Bash would have to go. Texas Birthday Bash, from a business standpoint, loses money. It does bring in a lot of advertising. It does. But it loses three-hundred-and-thirteen thousand, nine-hundred-and-ten dollars proposed for next year. So with that, the next item being proposed to cut would be the marketing and multimedia specialist. Please understand, if you do not cut the Texas Birthday Bash, if that's something, hey, I'm not going to cut it, you can't cut this position. You cut this position, all you're going to do is continue to have turnover in that position. I'm telling you, the amount of work that is needed, that position carries on. It's in the job description. I got it. They knew what they were signing up for. But the problem is, there's so much in there that is needed. That person is over events. That person is over marketing, communication, social media. I don't even, I don't even know how the previous person in that was able to even have a life outside of this city. But I'm telling you, we've got to have somebody in there to have help. This isn't somebody just to come in and only do multimedia. They are going to be able to help out with that position. I was told that Texas Birthday Bash takes nearly a thousand and forty hours. That is half the time for that position. Whether that's the truth or not, I don't know. I didn't keep track of it. But I will tell you, there is a lot of effort that goes in to maintaining and working the Texas Birthday Bash from getting the contracts, negotiations done, getting those signed, to getting the vendors here, making sure that everything's lined up, getting volunteers, overseeing the event once it occurs, all the marketing, all the ticketing. There's a lot. The next item, again, and these are ranked in order of priority based on what, if you ask me what, we're going down, what's least priority. Charter election would be the next item. Not to implement certification pay is the next one. Closing the swimming pool, and then INCO number ten. Now, go back to closing the swimming pool. The reason I put that on there is, many of you are aware, we already have some issues at swimming pool. I do not know at this time what it's going to cost to repair or fix the swimming pool. Many of our parks are in dire need of needing updating. And this isn't a maintenance and repair. These are major renovations that need to be done. The pool, I could bring back to you once we know a better number. But, you know, later discussions we can have, talk about CIP. We talked about plastering, new plastering. We talked about new decking. We talked about new fencing. There's a huge amount that needs to be done at the swimming pool. I'm not the one that's going to make that decision. Council needs to make decisions, what do you want to do? And so that's why I put it on here. Again, it does, it does affect a small group of our population. The majority would affect, would be the mud cats with their swim team. And then, of course, INCO ten. INCO ten is the latest and greatest. I would tell you that all the department directors voted for this to put this back in. When we went through the budget process, we made sure that at least every department asked for one person was in there because we talked about this budget being about people. The current budget we're in now is about compensation. This was about people. And so by getting people in there, everybody had one. We came in, we met as a group, the department directors. That was the number-one item first added back in was making sure that INCO ten was added. That comes a total of nine-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-three. In addition to that, I know that there's been several talks about personnel and the adding of nine people. I wasn't here when the riff occurred, but my understanding was about twenty employees within the police department. I think what I understood from the police chief is the ask that you see before you gets them back to the two-thousand-and-sixteen staffing. Two-thousand-and-sixteen staffing. I didn't run the numbers, but I'm sure our population has increased since two-thousand-and-sixteen to two-thousand-and-twenty-three. I was asked about, what is a taxpayer getting for the money? Well, if you're getting two additional firefighters, that means that now all our shifts will have three fighters, paid firefighters, certified firefighters on staff where the national per shift is moved more to four to five people. The chief has said that, based on part-time numbers, he's able to get that up to four. That means you have more firefighters to respond to medical and fire emergencies. We don't, we don't really go to a lot of fires. We do, a lot of medical emergencies we respond to. We do respond to fire calls on Highway Six as well as out in the county. The county is graciously within their budget, up just from ninety-two thousand to a hundred-and-five thousand. So there is a small amount that we're getting additional for that that wasn't budgeted, could be budgeted to ninety-two for the police department. So if you say, we're not going to do any nine, any of the nine new people, you can't. You're obligated to do one, and you have to do it. Because this council cannot sit back and not help out NISD by not providing them an additional SRO. That SRO, we have a great relationship. This council and staff has an awesome relationship with our school district. I would hate to cripple that relationship by not being able to provide them with SROs. Right now, they are using our off-duty time. So officer, when they're off-duty, instead of having an off-duty paid job, they are using that off-duty officer to supplement SROs because they're required to have X amount within there. Now, we do get a benefit. The school district is going to fund seventy, seventy percent of that. So seventy percent of that is going to be coming back. So if you say, hey, we're not going to do an SRO, well, that means the revenue's got to come out too. So they're paying seventy percent. We do get use of thirty percent of that. The other, other request was to add an additional sergeant to patrol within what I provided you. The chief has provided a lot of further documentation. I'm not going to go into the details for each one of these positions. So you can actually look in there if you want to know exactly what that officer's doing. But right now, we do not have enough supervision on our patrol units. And our patrol sergeant, one patrol sergeant we have now, as you heard our fire chief talk about, those people that are in step-up are required to do specific paperwork, a lot of documents. That's what the sergeant does. And also, the sergeant makes final decisions whenever there needs to be somebody that makes that decision. One patrol sergeant isn't enough for the amount of officers we have on the street. The other ask was to move a patrol officer to a narcotics investigator promotion. And when I say promotion, it's a small uptick from a patrol officer to a narcotics officer. So a, the majority of the crime that our DA's experiencing as well as our police department have been involving narcotics. And having somebody that specializes in narcotics investigation, narcotics is needed in Navasota. And so that's the reason for that ask. In addition to that, we're looking at a lateral transfer of patrol officers to a traffic unit. And that traffic unit would be to enforce the truck route as well as address some of the crashes that occur on Highway Six. Because right now, if you have a crash that occurs on Highway Six, we're taking an officer off the street and putting him out there. It might have been two out there. So, and whoever's out there, they actually have to do the paperwork. By having a specific traffic unit, that is their, not only do they, they work the accident and, but they're required for the paperwork. The other ask for an additional person is for the street maintenance labor. Again, that speaks for itself. I shouldn't have to speak for that. Street maintenance, there's a lot that's going on with street maintenance, whether it's helping fill potholes or helping out with other public works activities on a daily basis. That, that position's needed. Taxpayers are going to get a building official and, which also has a plans examiner attached to it. And you might not think that's something all glamorous and great, but we are now got about twelve-hundred homes in the pipeline. That is either, meaning they're already in the process of building them. They've already submitted plans. Or they've submitted plans and we're in the reworking from engineers' comments back. Or they've already met with us and letting us know this is coming forward. With that, we contract out these services to a third party. When you contract out service to a third party, your customer service is depleted. So they do not know the Navasota way. They don't know who you are or what you do, or where you've been, or anything about your circumstance. All they're doing is looking on paper. By having an in-house building official that knows the organization, knows the community, is able to provide that customer service, we're able to be a lot more builder and developer-friendly to, because we are growing. It is coming. If we're not prepared, we're going to be way behind. And by adding this position, you don't want to add it, that's fine. You're only going to save about thirty-five thousand dollars because I'm going to have to take the amount that's budgeted for this and move it over to contracted services because, again, this position has been contracted out. We're going to have to increase it. As I mentioned before, related to the marketing and multimedia specialist, again, we have many community events, Sounds of Summer, Freedom Festival, Home for the Holidays, Texas Birthday Bash. The Marketing Communications Director handles marketing, communications, public information, press releases, website administration, social media maintenance, graphic design, as well as coordinating and overseeing every event that the city of Navasota undertakes. That, that position needs some assistance. And by adding the marketing multimedia specials will aid in- That, that position needs some assistance, and by adding the marketing multimedia specials will aid in, um, that position. Um, there's been discussion about, um, the Assistant City Manager. Again, the Assistant City Manager is not a new position, it was not funded this last year. Uh, and so I've mentioned to council previously that if I needed that, I would come back and ask for it to be funded. I came back, I'm asking for it to be funded. Um, uh, many, uh, of the duties related to the Assistant City Manager, uh, position is going to be aiding in day-to-day operations along with assisting department directors on special projects. Uh, as you know, completion of the Aggie Freeway, Navasota has become a place where developers are wanting to expand and build. Um, I don't know if you've heard the comment, rooftops drive economic development. So without the rooftops, without developers and without working with those developments coming here, our retail and restaurant businesses that we want and desire are not going to come to fruition. We have to be ready for, for that. Um, it, it also could aid in HEB building their location. Uh, as I mentioned previously, we got over a thousand homes in the pipeline. Um, I cannot do all of that. I can't, I can't meet with all the developers, plus handle all the daily operations as well as, um, other duties that, um, I'm having to take on. In addition to that, within the strategic plan, um, there are specific duties, are, uh, items that you've added for goals. This Assistant City Manager, uh, will take on a lot of those responsibilities. If you'll flip over to, um, the page where we talk about the strategic plan, I really want to dive in, even though we've not officially adopted the strategic plan, you've been given the strategic plan, you've been asked to for, provide feedback on it. Um, I received some feedback from council, so the plan is to move forward with bringing this as an action item for adoption. But I want to briefly talk about planning and economic development. So part of that strategic plan is, uh, the city, uh, will plan for smart growth while maintaining small-town charm. The first item is develop a comprehensive plan for the city of Navasota that includes zoning and subdivision ordinances and housing developments and recruitment. So currently, that project will reside with Development Services Director. The Development Services Director cannot do that plan on his own, plus maintain the day-to-day operations. It, it's not, you, I'm telling you, when I told you before, workload can, we cannot add on any additional. And adding this on to a current employee's job duties is not feasible.
So in, so in realistic, what you're saying is that we've got the staff to do it, but we're overloading them. Is that what you're saying?
So on this part right here, yes, sir, yes, sir, we, 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 we are behind on the comprehensive plan. And if you add, um, the duties of implementing a new comprehensive plan, meeting with, doing all the public meetings, doing all of the lead work and all of that, that would eat up the majority of that employee's time. Who's going to run the department? When that's happening? So the, so the thought is, this is like one of those special projects I just mentioned, myself, the Assistant City Manager and the Development Services Director will work on that project, um, together and comprehensively and collaborative work to try to figure out how we're going to implement and work on the plan. In addition to that, bringing in a building official, the building official will help out in alleviating some of that workload. So it, it's going to, it takes a village to be able to do this, and we're adding, by adding the Assistant City Manager and a building official, you're taking all that, not all of it, but you're, you're pulling some of that load off of, uh, on the Development Services Director. The last thing you want to do is continue to run off directors from workload. And I, uh, over the last year, um, the Development Services Director, Economic Development Director, and your Marketing Communications Director have been added projects, special projects, whether it's wayfinding, whether it's, uh, policies and procedures, whether it's, um, events or whatever it's been, have been added to all of our, all of our duties. And so this is a way to be able to help relieve some of that tension. Um, the next item is hiring the Main Street Director. Uh, uh, again, we're not stopping in that process of the application to become a Main Street City. But I need for council to understand, at some point, if you do desire to move toward being a Main Street City, you have to hire a Main Street Manager, that's part of the requirement. And so, uh, the idea is, um, that we, um, uh, will partially be funding that through the hotel motel occupancy. There's a specific dollar amount, and so once we get that dollar amount from, uh, what we can use hotel motel funds for on that, we'll be providing that, but within the budget, we did provide you an idea of what the cost by providing that position is. Um, develop a, a ten-year CIP plan, so, um, as we start moving forward, we have to start planning. Um, we can't just keep being reactive, and part of that within your strategic plan was develop us a ten-year CIP, CIP plan. You can't say, okay, CFO, stop what you're doing, quit doing your, your, your daily journal entries, paying bills, and, and overseeing utility billing and all of that, we need to provide, we need some assistance. So by having an Assistant City Manager, you're a, a, aiding in, somebody to come in and help work through a ten-year CIP plan, because that is, all departments are going to have to help out by identifying what their CIP, whether it's a wastewater treatment plant, whether it's another water tower, whether it's another fire station, um, whether, uh, it's a new library, a community center, a new water feature, a new park, whatever it is, we need to put that in. If it's over five thousand dollars, it needs to be on the CIP plan. And when I say five thousand, not so much on your, uh, um, your vehicles, but on your big equipment. So dozers, um, backhoes and those type of things. And the next item is focus on workforce development concerns and solutions. Um, so currently, the Economic Development Director, along with two other directors, have been, like I said, been acting, um, as the, uh, Assistant City Manager job duties, by hiring a dedicated ACM to handle the, uh, these type of duties, will take some of that pressure off of the EDC, EDC Director so that she can actually accomplish working on workforce development. Uh, goal two, Marketing Communications, create a two-year marketing plan with priorities outlined. Um, our Marketing Communications Director had just started, uh, the TCU, um, program to become a Certified Public Communicator. So now, now that, um, uh, she's gone, uh, we've got to start that process over. So part of that program is putting together a two-year plan. So, um, a, by adding a marketing and mu, and multimedia specialist, again, you're adding some help for that position so they can concentrate on creating a two-year marketing plan. Um, right now, we've just been kind of doing the same thing we've always done, on, unless we get some new thing that comes up that we want to advertise with, uh, but we need to have a plan. Where are we trying to reach, what are we trying to do, and what are we trying to accomplish? Uh, evaluate resident communications tools. Um, Blackboard Connect, um, i- is one of the areas that we currently use as an application. That is what we call, I think Mayor calls it reverse nine-one-one. Uh, so when you get, uh, uh, a work order or some, uh, we're going to do flushing of the fire hydrants, we get a call out. So currently, right now, um, that, that system has about half, over half, the connections that we have are bad numbers. And so trying to work with them has not been very easy. So mildly going to need to look at some other type of communication software to be able to do that. Um, in addition, that's not what the Public Works Director's job should be, it's more of a communications job. So now, even though we don't want to add more workload, the Marketing Communications Department needs to handle communications. And so moving that over, again, adding the Marketing Communication, uh, Multimedia Specialists will aid in be able to accomplish this goal and, and having a better system that we can do reverse nine-one-one that actually is reaching people that live here now and not bad numbers. Outreach to the Texas Historical Commission's, uh, Brazos Trail and Navasota Grimes County Chamber of Commerce regarding heritage tourism events. Again, due to the workload of the Marketing Communications Director, this has not been able to be accomplished, we've just not been able to do it. Um, and so by adding a, a, additional person to that department, um, hopefully we can actually accomplish this and find a way to, uh, bring back some, uh, heritage and tourism. Um, I didn't highlight and I missed the highlight for two-point-four, but survey residents on how they get their information. Again, that's what the use of that survey was, um, is to be able to go out and, uh, survey, uh, our residents to figure out how their base get their information and then start surveying them. Uh, implement a plan to host town hall meetings two times a year. Um, again, adding an ACM is going to allow me to be able to prepare for that and better, uh, understand the needs of the community. Um, council has asked that I would get out at my desk and be out in the community. It's hard to do that when there's so much other day-to-day operations that I'm trying to take care of. By adding an ACM will allow that opportunity to occur. Launch new Navasota, uh, EDC tourism website and train staff on how that, how to manage the department. Again, going back to the Marketing Communications Director position. Um, the websites were launched, there's still areas that need to be improved on. Um, based on the workload of the previous, uh, Marketing Communications Director, there was no way to be able to make those changes that need to be changed, by adding an additional specialist will aid in that. Now, again, I'm talking about, a lot about the Marketing Media Specialist. I have no plans on hiring, marking, if you approve that position, hiring that position off the bat. I'm going to want somebody to come in, I want their analysis of it. Um, and all of this is based on and was prepared based on the analysis of the Marketing Communications Person that we just had. So again, it's not set in stone, that's why I've not advertised for it. I'm just telling you, based on what I've been told from that director, this is what's being needed. Again, if approved, that will be evaluated and discussion be made at that point. Uh, reevaluate, uh, reevaluate community events and their budgets. Um, as I mentioned, currently, right now, Texas Birthday Bash runs a deficit of over three hundred thousand dollars annually. Uh, other events within the, uh, city, um, their cost is around forty thousand dollars each. Um, and so trying to determine, you know, wha- what do, what do we want to do, what do we want to, what do we want to keep doing? Do you want to keep doing everything, or what do we need to do? Uh, again, adding additional staff will help, uh, relieve some of that workload. Goal number three, goal number three is quality of life. So quality of life, um, which I think council member has already, uh, brought up, uh, explore recruiting partners, um, like Boys and Girls Club or YMCA. So myself, Economic Development Director and our Parks and Rec Manager, as well as the Mayor, we've been, um, meeting with the community. We've been meeting with Boys and Girls Club of Brian Caldwell to understand how they implemented a new program and how that occurred. Um, the adding of, of an ACM will allow the City Manager to continue to focus on these efforts um, and determine, you know, what, what do, what do we need to do, what do we need to go for, um, uh, to be able to partner with and, and start a Boys and Girls Club. Uh, the next goal was to offer at least two new programs per year.
Can I ask you a quick question, I'm sorry?
Yes, sir.
If you, i- if we did hi- hire an Assistant City Manager, it looks like a lot of these things, you have the same three or four people tied up in all of these communications. Um, with an ACA, would you, I'm sorry, ACM, would you, um, potentially remove the Development Director from the Boys and Girls Club conversation so that, um, she or he would be um, able to focus just on what they're doing as opposed to
Yes.
playing your assistant in the, in those meetings?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir. That, 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 that's the thought. Um, um, pro, new pro, uh, some new programs. So within the budget, um, the, uh, the new Parks and Rec Manager has added programming. Uh, again, I don't know if you saw that, uh, which was listed in the, the slide that we, we talked about, uh, but such as yoga, disc golf tournaments, painting classes, uh, dance classes, zumba, most of these events will be hosted in Navasota Center. Um, so again, um, we need to continue to place priority on maintaining the Navasota, um, Center, uh, which we did, included in the budget was the addition of tables, chairs, ceiling fans and blinds. Um, also to offer at least one event per quarter. Uh, currently, I think we, we accomplished that already. Uh, you know, there, as mentioned in the last line there, it, maybe want to revisit Texas Birthday Bash if you decide you want to, um, possibly do some budget reductions, uh, to add or enhance park recreation facilities once a year. Proposed within the budget, um, in the capital section is, um, the expansion of Mantle Liscum Cedar Park Phase One, renovations to the municipal swimming pool, enhancements to Hillside Park, and addition of a pier at Pat Two Pond. We do need, before we have any further discussions later, is talk about capital. Because capital is, uh, in the capital sector, is in the capital fund. Um, we will need to figure out either, um, a funding source for that, again, grants being first, any donations, sponsorships, and then last but not least, um, issuing debt for that. Um, but, um, we have a lot of parks. Our parks, as I mentioned before, just like our streets and utilities have gone, um, unattended for years. These are not maintenance and repairs item, repair item, these are renovations, rehabs. They are, um, thousands, thousands, thousands of dollars that need to be invested back into these, um, locations, which is not part of the general fund, it's part of your capital funds, because you're going to need grants, sponsorships, uh, donations, or, or debt. Uh, we talk about out, outreach, connect and network, uh, so, uh, Parks and Recreation Manager and the Economic Development Director, so please understand, so the reason the Economic Development Director is included in here is because the Parks and Recreation, um, position is a manager, and that manager, Parks and Recreation, um, any, uh, community or economic, um, development reports to the Economic Development Director. So the Economic Development Director is a director over the library and over, um, the Parks Department. So they, those two, um, departments report directly to the Economic Development Director. So that's why they're included in it. So she might not be involved in, in everything, but the reason she's included in here is because she's ultimately over that department. Um, and then we talk about evaluate, um, outreach efforts, awareness in the programming. Uh, again, um, in, included within the budget is programming for, um, you know, daddy-daughter dance, mommy and me, movies in the park, uh, just movies in general, yoga classes, art classes, uh, inflatables, mini golf events, ski run and esports. Those are things that, um, the manager has, uh, thought about and ideas that he would like to push forward for next year. Goal five is human resources. Uh, so, um, the, uh, City Manager and the City Secretary have been working with Human Resource Department, uh, to meet this goal, um, related to improving the onboarding process. So, uh, part of the onboarding process is, um, making sure that, um, everybody knows when they're hired, you're provided a, um, employee handbook, you know, um, everything that you need to know about the city, uh, and, um, y- any type of questions you might have. So we are looking at policy, so there's policy things that we're looking at. The employee handbook, um, we'll, we'll talk about it in a little bit, but I don't want to get too much in. For the employee handbook, uh, there's some changes that need to be in that. Um, in order to do that, you've got to have staff time to be able to evaluate what those changes need to be, uh, and look at that. Um, five-point-two is improve boards and commission members onboarding process. I think this is something, you heard multiple facets of sta, the stakeholder groups and as well as at the town hall meeting was, uh, I'm on, I'm on a board and commission, what do I do, what's my responsibilities? So the City Secretary and, um, Executive Administrative Assistant are, have already started working on this. Um, again, it's to kind of give them job descriptions and, um, uh, so that when they come on, they know what their responsibilities are.
And take the required training as well.
Yeah, and take the required training, that's the big piece is, is there's some required training that they, uh, have and making sure that they, they're, it's up kept every couple of years, because they, the state comes in and updates that, so you've got to go in every, I think every two years and do the training. Um, the last thing is revise personnel policies I just mentioned, um, which includes the, the four items that we had, um, previously in the, uh, work session. And, uh, the last, uh, the last goal is related to facilities, or the, uh, goal six is facilities, buildings. Um, kind of only part I want to draw your attention to is, um, the public safety piece. So council, uh, the Mayor had established a council staff committee, uh, to, uh, which comprised of the Mayor Prutim Gessner and Council Member Foltz, along with myself, the Fire Chief, Police Chief, and our Engineer and Public Works Director, identify possible locations for, um, um, a dual public safety facility. Uh, during that meeting, uh, the committee decided, uh, that we want to keep, uh, Police Department here at City Hall. We think it's a better location here, central location. Uh, so with that, we have identified a couple of locations for a new fire station, which is not far from where our current fire station is, but we've identified those. So, um, the, the primary focus for the Fire Chief for next year, along with me assisting with it, is to begin negotiations to identifying what the cost is going to be associated with, um, um, identifying which one of those two locations will be more economical for the city. Uh, and then the other piece is, uh, develop a facilities, uh, master plan. Uh, so there was multiple, uh, uh, facilities that were listed on there, um, uh, Horlock House, Navasota Center, um, Public Works, but mainly within this document, I wanted to put that that, um, included the municipal swimming pool because that is uh, one critical piece that we will in the next year need to decide what, what are we gonna do? And so hopefully Ryan will be able to, uh, identify, when we get somebody out there, identify where the leak is occurring and provide some options, uh, and so that council can decide, um, where are we gonna go next with it? So, that's, that's, I have no idea, and that's, that's something that council's gonna have to, to think about, yes, sir.
Do you have somebody scheduled to come out and look at it, or are we just talking about?
No, sir, so we.
Ryan Haneux, Parks and Rec Manager, I've had some people come out and, um, give me estimates, I've had our guy that comes out and maintains the pool to keep it clean, has connections with commercial plumbers and whatnot, and they have theories. But nobody has came out and actually dove into the pool to, I, I, I'm, I'm waiting for a response from a guy that will put on scuba gear and go to the bottom and put dies in there and whatnot. Um, but I think I have it narrowed down to where those commercial plumbers thought it was. Um, cause I turned, once we closed the pool down, I turned the water off for the season and it's dropped down to where it is now, and I'm thinking it's somewhere near the, near the gutters. But, um, I mean, I can't confirm or deny that until we get someone in there.
Right, and so, so you kinda remember how we, we don't know what the dollar amount is, so we have to get some quotes. Um, I mean, cause if it's twenty-five thousand dollars, then we need to have a discussion to build for somebody to go out there and check that out. So, I wanna figure out what the cost is and, and Navasota is not, we're not in a great location here, um, for trying to get somebody that specializes in this to come out, and so it, it's sometimes difficult to get somebody to come out and work on our pool. The last item, goal number seven, uh, is maintaining repairing, uh, infrastructure, streets, water, natural gas. Again, um, within the budget, uh, there's multiple items that address this from, uh, the new water tower, the water plant, water well, the Hollister Gas Regulator Station, Pecan Lake Subdivision Loop Gas System, the wastewater treatment plant, CIP Phase Two. Kinda bring that up, so this year's budget, we budgeted, we issued debt for the wastewater treatment plant Phase Two. Then we had the, the clarifiers and rotors and stuff that went bad, and we had to do an emergency purchase, if you remember that. We had to use the funding that we were gonna use for that, for that project. If we had not used the funding for that project, then we would up with a paddle, up, up creek without a paddle, seriously. So, um, that project still has to exist. So, it, because we didn't do it, doesn't mean that we just check it off and say we don't do it, we still gotta do the wastewater treatment plant, uh, CIP Phase Two. And so, um, we use bud, we but use bond money for what we're doing now. So, that's why it's added back in here for next year, we're gonna have to use rate money to be able to, to pay for that. I know I spoke a lot, um, I do know that one of the things that I'd like to have some conversation with council about is related to that one slide related to the capital projects. Um, my thought is, um, not something that we have to make a decision on today. It's de, it's, it's in the capital projects, um, there's no funding, uh, there's no revenue funding source for it, so it's not like I'm gonna go out and I don't have any fun, I don't have no money to spend from it. So, this is discussion, once we have more information about the pool, I'd rather have more conversation throughout the year, we come back and focus on that, again, it's in the capital projects fund, so I'm telling you, no funds will be spent out of it. Uh, because there's no revenue, because the revenue is debt related, I'm not issuing any debt, council would have to issue debt.
You mentioned something back up at the, uh, very top when you start talking, said that the nine new employees that you was proposing to us was not gonna get paid out of the, uh, rates increase, uh, how will they get paid?
So, they will be paid, uh, only the water wastewater is paid out of the rates, cause it's out of the, the sewer fund. The rest of the employees are paid out of the general fund. They're not paid from the water sewer.
They're paid out of the general fund, what, what, what did we go without that we had last year to hire eight new, uh, new employees? If you follow my, my question, since you said that the new employees will not get paid from the increase of the utilities?
Correct.
Where in the revenues will they get paid from that supposed to have been the own current from, from last year, nothing increased you say?
So, uh, your, your general fund is paid from, um, let me go to the PowerPoint.
How are we gonna fund the eight, eight new employees?
They're gonna be paid from the general fund, they're gonna be paid for.
Yeah, uh, well, I guess my main question is where's that coming from?
So, uh, revenues from general fund, uh, property tax is about twenty-four percent of the revenue comes from general fund from property taxes. Charges from services is about twenty-two percent, I wish I would have brought magnifying glass here. Um, nineteen percent is from sales tax, um, um. Franchise fees is around three percent. Mixed beverage tax, so that's why they're general fund in nature. You pull all the funds, you have property tax, you have your inv- uh, your industrial development agreements, which is, um, uh, payments for our industries that are outside the city limits that are paying, um, uh, half the cost of the tax rate, uh, for services, uh, in the industrial area. Uh, we've got our sales tax, mixed beverage, franchise fees, um, so the solid waste, solid waste nets out. So, solid waste within the, the sanitation department, there's a line item for solid waste, so the amount that you have for solid waste um, revenues is a little bit higher than what the cost is for providing the service. Cause we have to, we have to put in, we put in, I think it's ten dollars, uh, additional for, or maybe it's two dollars additional for billing. Uh, so we're covered.
Well, I, I guess what I'm getting at is that you went through a list of if we did not do this, this is what we had to cut out, the birthday bash and some more stuff. But if we've got this on the revenue side that's coming in.
So, all, so all of the items there, um, the, the items that are presented, uh, those are being funded through the same place the nine positions are. Except for the birthday bash and only a hundred and five thousand is money coming in directly related to the birthday bash.
So, the birthday bash is not paid out of the general fund?
Yes, sir. Birthday bash is paid for out of the general fund. Birthday bash costs four hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars. We only bring in a hundred and five thousand, four seventy-five is the revenue.
But, I'm kinda confused though. What, what you just said that if the employees wasn't approved or the budget was cut, that you would have to pull some stuff out and you went through a whole list here, uh, but at the same time, we're still getting that revenue.
So, nowhere did I say I was, I was proposing to cut positions?
No, but I'm saying if. You said that if we, uh, let's see, you started off saying that you was asked to cut anywhere from one to one point five mil.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but the revenue is not gonna be cut, right?
Correct, that's what I'm saying, so you're going to end, your fund balance is gonna increase from from four point two million to over six point two million dollars.
Okay.
You have, so based on the proposed budget, you are, you still have four point three million dollars in the bank. Which is five hundred and forty thousand more than you should, based on your policy. By cutting one point five million, you've added another, um, two million dollars to that four point five, that four point three. And let me also explain, this budget, the proposed budget, adding the nine positions also comes at a tax decrease of over three point three nine cents.
That's because the evaluation went up, right?
That is correct. That's correct?
Yeah.
Well, I'm just gonna move to the thing that I'm concerned about, and that's rebuilding the restrooms at the parks.
All say, so, oh, what?
Uh, it's the.
Oh, wait, I'm, I'm.
So, we can see we got. It's okay. I, I'm just, I don't know why we're building.
Uh, so, so on, so at Hillside, so Hillside Park, the, the request was, okay, let's put a pavilion in there. So, the school district just put in the pickleball courts. Their request was, hey, we'll put the pickleball courts in, will you provide us with some restrooms? So, putting in a pavilion there, now you've added a place for people to gather, and now you've got pickleball courts there. Probably need to think about what, uh, um, a restroom facility. It's, i- i- it's, it's just a, uh, an amenity, I understand the concerns that it end up something like what we have now. But we have this, we, I mean, we just would operate just like we do, uh, the tourism restroom facility here, I mean, I don't think, have we had any issues lately in the tourism restroom facility with Bagram Sea or? So, I mean, that, that's how we would operate, but again, that's not a make or break, I, I'm just saying it was a request and, and it's part of that capital. So, we're not gonna do it anyway until we have further discussion.
It's, it's a problem for me that the, I, I think you still do have a problem down there, whether they're tearing it up or not, I don't know, but I know that there's people still living in and out of there, um, which is a concern. But we just tore down two, it's been a lot of our money to do it, and there and at the, uh, Manselliskum Park. I, I just don't know that that's an appropriate expenditure, and if we don't do it, that's cool, I just wanted to voice that.
And that's not, and that's not a, and that's not a make or break, I, it's just an amenity, uh, that can easily be taken out by council.
And I would like to see us figure out the pool just as soon as we can so that it will be way more expensive if the plaster is cracking and it's going underneath the thing. We had that at work, so, just recently.
It, um, staff is, is, is aware.
The community definitely wants it, I mean.
I, and it's not, again, that's not something that staff's want, wishing to do away with, again, we, we wanna be able to bring something back to council so they understand what the, the cost is and what the issues are before we do anything.
Uh, well, I'm back on the, uh, nine e- employees. A city of a size with that many people in administration, I'm, is, is, is that somewhat top-heavy?
So, again, um.
I guess to make a long story short, is, is it needed or is it just wanted?
So, council member, I mentioned before earlier, I'm not asking for anything that's a want, I'm asking for something that is a need. Um, your definition of a want might be different than my definition of a need. I, I don't, I, I'm come from the finance background, I'm not, I don't pad budgets. I don't allow staff to pad budgets, I don't, I don't do fluff, I don't do any of that in the budgets. The, the way that we do budgets here is line item budgets, the staff has to go in and line item exactly what they want. And if it, if, if they, if they put the information in there and I still don't know what they're asking for, they go back in and readjust it until I'm satisfied that they have provided justification for what they've asked for. That's the way I've done budget for twenty-three years.
Well, the reason I'm asking questions, I wanna be satisfied also.
But, and I got it, I'm, I, my definition of, of want and need is different than your definition, I've said I, I need it. That's what I'm, I'm asking for, um, but for top-heavy, no, sir, this is a, again, um, the, other than the building official, I don't know if we had a building official, I know that, um.
Yes.
Alright, so, so we had these positions before.
A lot of them did, yeah, and
So, this isn't.
and some were, and some were cut during the reducing.
Yeah, so, so these aren't new, new positions, now maybe the marketing and, and media specialist is, but again, um, we've also had turnover every year, year and a half in that position, I know of at least three or four positions that's been through here, um, in that position. You're gonna, you, I'm just saying, you're gonna continue to have it, um, and it's not something that I can tell you right now. Um, the grant coordinator that picked it up and is trying to run with it right now on an interim basis is already in just eight hours overcome with what is being asked because of the amount of detail that goes into what we need to do for that position, um, so.
Say that too loudly.
Yeah.
You gotta hire somebody.
Yeah, I know, but, but, but we, but we are very honest when we go through our, so we, we were very honest when we go through our, our, um, interviews, so, um, uh, m- many organizations, there, there are some that actually have, um, a lot more admin staff. Um, I, I, I understand from staff that, especially like the police department, they're just now getting to two thousand and sixteen um, staffing. We, um, our population is around eighty-six hundred, um, it's expected to, uh, based on, um, the projections, just with the twelve hundred homes that we're adding is around three thousand. Uh, and that three thousand homes could be maybe seven hundred, uh, maybe eight hundred people a year. So, we're, we're adding, we're, we're getting bigger. That means more staff's gotta be added, it's, it, it's just, it's just part of the, um, the addition of the staffing, so on the police department's uh, national average, I think the low average is two point four, uh, ser- uh, sworn officers on the street per one thousand population. Um, and, or twenty, yeah, twenty-four, and we're, and that's the, on the low end, that's not even on the high end, and we're at so we got twelve officers and then how many corp, two corporals, uh, and a sergeant, so we're, we're below the, the lowest average.
We're way below the national average.
Yeah, what I, what I just wanna make sure is that, uh, we are growing. I, I just wanna make for, for sure we continue to grow, people are moving here for a reason. And is it the reason because, uh, we're not like the College Station, we're not like the Brunnen, we're not like the Montgomery, we're not like the, uh, what, what is that, I, I guess down off in Harris County? They're moving here for a reason, and I did a little survey of myself, uh, I checked with the school superintendent because I wanted to find out who's moving here, and I, I kinda used this, um, I asked, uh, Dr. Nuzik, from the first week of school last year to this year first week of school, how many new students that we, let's see, only forty-three, forty-three, forty-four people? So, with the amount of rooftops that are being built and sold here, that tells me that we're more, I won't say retirement community, but it's more of older people that's moving here, what I came up with. And it's a reason why they're moving here, uh, can you kind of talk on that?
I mean, I, I moved here because I love the downtown area, I mean, I, I love the small town charm. Um, I, I, I know people in, uh, my neighborhood, they, they like how it is out there, it's like living in the country, there's not a lot of lights, um, the, the, uh, streetlights that, that were out there is not very bright. Uh, there's not a lot of traffic, uh, you can see stars, um, they complain about helicopters, but other than that, there's not much that we get a lot of complaints for out in that area. Um, other than that, that, that is the largest growing area in Navasota is, is on the west side. Um, we, we've got developers that wanna come here. Uh, the good thing is, um, it, we are developer friendly, and when I say developer friendly, what that means to me might be different than what that means to the developer, but what that means to me is, we do not charge impact fees. We, we, council gave me the green light to move forward with impact fees, impact fees would charge, uh, the developers a, um, a percentage for water, sewer and wastewater for each property they own. However, I believe there's a, there's a easier way to get to, because the reason is, why, why are you doing it? Well, the reason is, is so that they put in infrastructure that we do not have to maintain on a regular basis. That they put in the right, um, um, infra, uh, the right infrastructure, whether it's the right-sized lines, that they have, uh, uh, material that separates the line between each other, uh, that they put storm drainage in. Um, right now, we do not have requirements for concrete streets. Um, that's something that I think council needs to really think about, we need concrete streets, we need that as a, as a requirement, not asphalt streets. So, uh, we have a developer that's came out here in Pecan Lakes and has graciously put in concrete streets. That's gonna help our, our maintenance tremendously, but developers look at that when they come. That's gonna help our, our maintenance tremendously, but developers look at that when they come here, how much am I gonna pay in impact fees? Um, and the other piece is, our tax rate's not that high, I mean, for a size, a, a, city our size, 52 cents, um, for a tax rate is, is really good. Uh, in addition to that, you've got the hometown, you have the small-town feel, um, your utility rates, though you might wanna think they're really expensive, um, I will tell you, uh, rural water supply that we're dealing with right now is nearly 20, 25% higher than what we are. Um, go to some other cities, our, our utility rate consultant compared our rates with other cities, uh, and we are about even and a little bit lower than, um, most other cities, so our utility rates are really good. Uh, the other part is, we provide our own utilities, so we're able to provide customer service, um, to, um, the developers. And the other piece is, is, is our staff and management, we are able to find a win-win for developer, that's what, when a developer comes in, uh, I, I fi, I try to find a way to say yes to them, and whatever that means, there are times when I've had to say no to a developer, but I'm not gonna give the kitchen sink and everything else, uh, that we have to get a development here. I want, it needs to be a win-win, the developer, 'cause the developer comes in and develops, they're leaving, they're not even gonna look back, they don't live here, they don't, they don't eat here, they don't, they don't do anything here, um, and, but our staff and myself, I live here, I pay taxes, I eat here, I shop here, sort of our, sort of our residence, and so, we give that, that, that developer ourselves, and we try to find a win-win, so that what we're doing is providing a service to our community.
So, indirectly, you're saying as our city manager, in order to keep the town moving forward, you need these...
Yes, sir.
...fees?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I'll say to your point about the school, I, I think if you were to ask him what it was the year before that, it would've been under 20. So, I mean, I think the school's going in the right direction is what I'm saying, we're getting them, yeah.
I would like to add to that as well, because the, um, the little private school that opened up here in town, they doubled their enroll.
Private school, we have a private school?
Yes, they doubled their enrollment, and we've got several homeschool co-ops who have tripled the amount of children in them since the pandemic, so a lot of kids aren't going to public school right now, mine included, I homeschool. So, there's a, there's a, the, the school district is seeing a, a major impact from, still from the pandemic, because a lot of people decided they could work from home and home their children like a school in there, that's going on quite frequently, and is, I, I would also like to say, because I know it, it's, the budget season is such a treacherous time for, um, for the city and for the council and for the manager and for the head departments, um, and I speak about myself when I say this, I do not speak for, for all of my other members of the council here, but when I made the decision to hire Jason Weeks, my decision was based on his ability to bring us forward and prepare us for the growth that is coming our way, we have no control over the growth, it is going to be in our yard within the next five years. Our potential growth is ridiculous, and if we do not prepare ourselves, we are gonna spend the next 10 years behind the eight ball. I do not wanna be behind the eight ball anymore, our citizens do not deserve that, they deserve the better things, and all of the people that are moving here, they're the ones that are gonna be paying for it, not the current taxpayer, I know it appears differently, but I promise you it's not. There are things happening, bigger picture, much bigger picture, and the current employees that we have cannot continue to shoulder the burden of this growth alone, they need help, they're burned out, they're working long hours, they volunteer, they're at every single event that the city has, because there's no one else to be there, and that's all I have to say about it.
Well, uh, I'm, what you say, I somewhat agree with you, but still on that, when a, a employee is hired to do a job, I don't look for an employee to get burnt out, uh, unless you put too much on that employee, and then, if you're putting too much on that employee, maybe, uh, we need to bag some off. I, uh, you know, I love Navasota, and when I ran, I ran on, I love the, the direction that Navasota's going in, but we've got five council members up here, one city councilman, I mean, uh, one city manag, uh, one city manager, uh, and I think it's good when the council can sit down and ask questions and get answers and disagree to agree, and, uh, that's, make the general public say, okay, you all not rubber-stapping anything, you know, you asking questions, some, some questions that some of our supporters wanna know, and, uh, if we stay up here and just, I agree, I agree, I mean, you know, we, we might agree, but some of the general, general public, I tell, might not agree, but I think it's good when we can just have good discussion and, and just talk about stuff, and we can see how everybody feel. As a, as a council member, you know, we five can't get together on our side and talk, it's not only time we talk, you know, what each other's feeling is in a setting like this, and, uh, to know it's good, and, uh, I guess my next deal is, uh, let's talk about some, some quality of life like parks, what do we need to do as a council to head you in the right direction?
So that's, so that's that discussion I wanted to talk about, was, um, where do we, where do we wanna go? I think that is going to be a separate discussion, um, on parks in general, just parks in general. I know that our, um, parks manager, um, had, and our, um, assistant public works director have been going out and their ideas, I've asked them to take some photos, to get some ideas of our parks and bring something back, the plan is to have a joint meeting, I prefer to have a joint meeting between council and the parks board, to have a discussion about parks in general. Um, I think that'd be a good, healthy conversation to have, a work session style where we can talk about, where do we wanna go? What do you want? But, you need to understand, there, how you're gonna get there, you're gonna have to issue debt, that's where you have to go, and, and so what are you willing to, to burden on for that? Um, and so, those are discussions that we need to have, not a hundred percent has to be all debt, we will, staff is really great about identifying grants, and for the Mansaliskam expansion park, uh, staff got together and got a whole page of possible grants that we could apply for. So, we, again, grants, sponsorships, donations first, and then debt is second, but first, we need to have a general discussion of, where do you wanna go with, with parks? What do you want? What do you wanna see? Uh, I will say that as development happens east of town, um, so if the, the developer with the 1,200 acres decides to build the 5,000 homes that, uh, possible slated for that area, we're gonna need to discuss, are we gonna, what kind of park land we're gonna require, because the, with that expansion, I mean, that's gonna have nearly 12,000 employ, or 12,000 population, we're at 8,500 just right here, and you have 12,000 population over there in that area, we're gonna need to look at what parks are gonna look like there and, and for that, so that might be, that might be a, a, a recreation center, that might be a multi-use, um, uh, baseball park or, or soccer fields or whatever, those are things that we'll need to think about, but for now, we just need to have, just in generalization, of where do we want our parks now, that we have now, what we need, where we want those to go, and what do we want? So, uh, uh, you know, there was discussions about Kiwanis providing, uh, donating their property, uh, where the Boy Scout hut was, well, if that happens, are we willing to put some money into that? Uh, there's been discussion about Hillside, about putting, um, a pavilion there, the pavilion is, is based on, again, the pavilion can only be put on the school property, because the, the, oh, there's no other location on Hillside that the city owns that is not within the floodway, and so, staff is not recommending, and our engineer definitely won't, um, recommend putting concrete facility in a floodway that possibly could deteriorate, and that's just not a good use of funds. So, if the school district, so we, we were meeting with, uh, meeting with the developer on this Thursday, uh, to actually drive out to the facility, give them an, an idea of what, um, possibly could, they could actually build some single-family or different type home, townhomes out there, to see what his thoughts are, and if, if the developer doesn't think that that's a workable site, because they were gonna have to build up the pad sites because it's in the, uh, flood zone, um, then possible pavilion could be at that location, so, uh, there needs to be discussions about what Hillside's gonna look like, at Tupon, um, the parks manager has, has talked about putting a pier out there to, to make that a, 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 a great place to be able to have some different, not only kid fish, but regular quarterly fishing things for kids, um, out there, uh, you know, what is, what is Grace Park gonna look like, what is August Port Park gonna look like, um, there's a lot of, um, work that needs to be done at Manly, at the Manly baseball fields, what does that need to look like? Those are discussions we need to have just in general. I, and that's why I'm saying, I don't think, I don't think it's, it's a good idea to have it part of this discussion, because anything we do, we're gonna have to issue debt, and I, and I'm not, I'm not proposing the issuing debt related to, uh, increasing taxes this year at all. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor, on this, this agenda item, so the way that, um, I think my, our legal counsel really liked the way I, I kinda worded this, uh, so, um, yeah, he's gonna steal my, my wording off of it, um, so the way I worded it was very general, uh, to give council, anyway, said, you'll have to actually read the language here, so it, um, so it, it, the very last sentence says, "The city council may reach broad consensus on topics related to the PROS budget, but no final decision or vote will occur." So, what I'm asking, the next meeting we have is your public hearing, September 11th.
You want to have our, like, thoughts together, bud?
So, I need to know tonight whether I need to go back and do any changes to this budget, because, um, changes on the fly doesn't really happen really well next week, or next, in the next council meeting, and so, I, you don't, you're not voting on the budget, you're not making, uh, any allocations on the budget, but you're giving a consensus of how you want that presented, um, at the public hearing on September 11th, 'cause that's the first reading, we'll do a public hearing, and then we'll do the first reading of that ordinance, so, um, to, to do a first reading on the ordinance, I'm gonna need to know what, what that expenditure amount is, so, um, I need to kinda get some idea of what, what the thoughts are of council.
Well, if we're just expressing our opinion, I'm, I'm, I've already said that I've entrusted you to do what I thought you needed to do, what you think you need to do, and I am, I would, um, I would ask you to push forward the way it is right now.
I would say as well, just, uh, just because it's, again, it's a budget, it's, it's a working document, and it's something that, um, it's, it's a, it's a guide, and, and the overall, um, overall, what I see there is the direction we need to go.
Would like to get a, some, some clarification on something you mentioned earlier, say that, um, what we would be, uh, I know we're not approving it to, tonight...
Yes.
But you said that we wouldn't be approving a, uh, department or something, we'd just be approving a dollar amount...
Yes, sir.
And you would move it where it need to go?
So...
Did I hear that right?
Yes, sir, you did, but that's not necessarily the truth on that, so, how it's being presented is how it's gonna be entered into our system for budget, so those, all of those categories you have in there, those departments are gonna receive that budget allocation. What I'm saying is, I, as a city manager, have authority throughout the entire year to move it from, uh, say, uh, Public Works, uh, let's use, uh, I'm gonna use Parks and Recreation, so Parks and Recreation's, um, um, Department Supplies, General Supplies, um, if, if he needs to move it from there to his programming, he, I can give him authority to move budget into there, or if, um, our municipal court, I'm gonna pick on the judge 'cause she is here, municipal court, uh, she mentioned she's got a lot of jury trials that's coming up, and so, maybe she didn't budget enough for jury trials, but, uh, I, maybe I didn't go to all my travel and training, I can move budget from my department to her department to cover for those expenses, so, under...
Without coming back to council, right?
Without coming back to council.
Long as you stay in that amount.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Only, only if I go over that amount do I have to come back to council, in, over the budgeted amount, yes, sir.
Well, uh, I'm gonna say, just say that, you know, I'm entrusting my fellow ladies and men, ladies, not ladies, ladies, men, that, you know, they, they put trust in you, and I'm hoping that, um, I can put trust in you, um, that you say, if you, because I don't know you as well as they know you, that you're gonna do what you say you're gonna do, and I'm quite sure that if one of these positions don't work out, the council will have the authority next year not to prove it in the budget.
Yes, sir. Sure can.
I think you're heading in the right direction, and I would like to see the pavilion, uh, the restrooms not be a part of that, out of discussion, when we may have such discussion.
Okay.
Which restroom was that?
With, related to Hillside Park, adding any, adding any additional restrooms, so Mansaliskam Park, we've, we've talked about adding a restroom there, um, related to the splash pad in the, in the playground, and then also at Hillside Park.
Yeah, you, you gotta have restrooms if you have a family park.
So, so here's the thing, again, that's a discussion we'll have at a future date, we're not...
Yeah.
There's no funding for it, so...
It would be a temple.
I, I like Ms. Richardson's, uh, ideas, support for the library, I think that's something that probably needs to be beefed up. This is a planning document, and we need to realize that this is something that we, we use as a basis for moving forward, and it's not gonna come out that way at the end of the year. If we have anybody who has such good prognostication skills, that they can predict what's gonna happen from that, maybe we can get together a little stock program, a little stock, so, with what we have now, this is, this is the, the best effort that we can put forward at this time, there are little tweaks, there are little things that I like, little things that I dislike, and all in all, they're gonna be governed by events. Some of the events, one of the, one of the things that I've remarked to other people in the administration, in the time that I've been on council, there has never been so much grant money floating around, and I'm a sucker for a bargain.
Well, we're gone, it's not quite a while without, so, they're just now coming back.
Yeah, with the grant money, so we need, we need a reserve money there, because a lot of them are matching grants type things, uh, I think we're on the right track.
And Mayor, Council, I will definitely, um, be sure we have discussions with library director, and, um, like I said, she's already provided a response, and something that she's willing to try, once we get our new person up and going and learn the system, and we'll be sure to update y'all on when that'll be, and, and look at, uh, doing that for a trial to see, uh, what it can do for, uh, at least once a month on Saturdays.
I don't know what her situation is on using volunteer help.
Yeah. Mayor, that's all I got.
Okay, everybody good? All right, we will adjourn.